Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the council meeting, Nelson Council meeting, August the 7th, 2023. Take a minute, say a word of prayer, and then, Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the rain today. We just thank you for your provisions and your protection, Father God. We ask that you would lead, guide, direct every one of us here tonight, the decisions that we make that affect our citizens, Father God, and remind us that we're servants to our citizens. Lord, just ask that you would protect our firemen, our EMTs, our police officers, our servicemen, and whether they're heroes, overseers, Lord, and just put your edge of protection on our kings and Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, the liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you, Mrs. Can I get a motion to approve agenda for this evening? Kristi, can I get a second?
Second.
David, all the favor? Public hearing for our heavy industrial zoning ordinance. Open that up. Is there anybody here that has any questions regarding our heavy industrial zoning ordinance?
Can you explain exactly what that is?
The city is adopting a heavy industrial zoning ordinance to cover our, we didn't have one previously, and so we've annexed in a quarry and some land. It's not an annex, so just the...
We have that as any classification if the quarry wants to annex in, which they have come to us and asked questions about. We do not currently have an HI zoning classification. We have a light industrial classification. The quarry's currently zoned as an HI, so it's not, it wouldn't change anything from what it's currently zoned as. It would just go, the city doesn't have an HI zoning.
So are you talking about that land on the corner of Old Nelson?
No, no. That's currently zoned as LI. Now, there's a chance at some point that they may want to change that to that, but it wouldn't change what they would be doing there if they were to apply for that, which I don't know if they would or not. I have no idea. But this was pertaining to the quarry, but we couldn't allow them to annex in if we don't have the category of classification to put them into.
Did I answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've been working with that. Does anybody else have any questions with regards to that? I'll close the public hearing. We need to go to the last one, Mr. Mike. All right, next up is going to be our public appearance. Do we have anybody that has anything for the council or myself tonight pertaining to our agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Actually...
Could you state your name and address for us?
My name is Joanna Beck, and I am 1663 Old Nelson Road. And I noticed you had speed bumps on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
So the area that we live, because there's a few of my neighbors here, there have been two accidents so far because of people speeding. And thank God, there hasn't been any tragedies because it's going to happen eventually if nothing is taken care of. I feel that speed bumps is not the solution. A speed hump is a solution, which is larger, and you have to go 25 miles an hour so you don't bottom out, but also, police presence. We need police.
I actually did contact Lieutenant Desis. He's the new precinct commander down there. I contacted him right after that, and he's had his guys up here. We've been discussing it too, so he's been very responsive.
Good, because ever since, well, it's just changed a lot over the last 20 years that I've lived here. A lot more people live here, and people know that we don't have a police presence here anymore, and so they speed through the dump trucks and trucks from the quarry. My neighbor counted 37 dump trucks in one day going back and forth, and they speed. And so I feel like it's danger, I'm a runner. I run out on the roads, and I don't run on the sidewalk, but people walk on the sidewalk daily. Their lives are in danger from people speeding. Mailboxes have been knocked over. His neighbors, it was right by you where that young lady was doing like 70 miles an hour down the road.
Two hours next to me, both their mailbox had gotten knocked out.
We had the speed bumps installed, and we had it at that curve.
We had a couple of them there, and then, for some reason, all of them got pulled up at the same time a couple of years ago, literally.
We do have, I have gotten a few phone calls, though, and I'm sure it's probably in the neighborhood.
I actually asked them to all come tonight because I've gotten so many calls from all of them. And Debra Wheaton, she lives 1667 Old Nelson Road, she came in, she got called into work. She was planning on being here tonight. Her mailbox has been knocked down 22 times.
Wow.
From actually 1667. I've had numerous conversations with her, but it's that one stretch, like where the new neighborhoods are in Old Nelson going towards the quarry. There's like little S curve in there, and they just take off. I did contact the quarry and Ernst Concrete and tell them that we have our no-through truck signs up, and then we've asked the Sheriff's Department to come in and patrol, you know, have the presence here. And again, he's been extremely responsive, so it's...
One other thing, my husband was driving, he was coming home from Canton, and he was driving on Old Nelson, and he had a motorcycle pass him. One day, I was backing out of my driveway. I looked, nobody was coming. As I was coming out, someone had to pass me because they were going to rear end me. And so it is just extremely dangerous on our street. I wouldn't even let my kids play outside.
I'm nervous to move along on that front.
But I thank you guys for hearing. I hope and pray that a tragedy doesn't have to happen before something's done.
Understood.
I want to say.
22 times is excessive. Do we have something currently with Cherokee County where you can issue citations on that?
Sort of. I was going to address that tonight.
If we don't, can you get me all the information that we need, and so we can get that fixed?
I think it depends, like if it's the, if you can run radar up there. I don't know. I'm not sure, Greg, you can. I think that's what I think to Simmons, so it depends on the...
There's a couple different things. We've also been discussing with the Marshal's Office and also with the enforcement for the industrial trucks.
And I'd like contacting DOT and GSP, too. So whatever you need, absolutely.
We'll actually, I'll actually contact them for you and transfer that information to them. I'm going to ask them for cooperation. There's certain things that they can do that we're not prepared to do, but it has more to do with inspections and weighing the trucks and things of that nature that are more of an annoyance and a great for them, for the truck drivers.
The turn, yeah.
Right, which is the reason why they're using that road in the first place is it's convenient to them.
Yeah.
And I know we had some pushback from some residents, but 22 times is excessive, and I would like to ask the council if we could install speed bumps, especially where that curve is at.
Best thing to do is have wind...
Will that be the deterrent until we can, say that again, James?
Have wind head cocked installed out of that valve that'll have to be six feet wide.
That would be the speed bumps. It'd be like a permanent.
You'll bottom out if it's flying out of those.
Yeah.
Do we want to go ahead and place bumps right now where we want the humps, and just so there's, we've got something there now as a deterrent, and then have him come in and put the humps where we are?
The ones further down when they were pickings, people were going around them, but they were deciding people's yards. That's not going to be an issue, I don't think, down that end, because I think there's more of a curve type thing on that end. But you can put them in temporarily while I get pricing from them, if that works for y'all.
Yeah, just, I don't know if there's pricing.
I think it's a red button. We're going to have to get it. Yeah, I think there's a bunch.
Because them others is really rough on the front.
Why don't we, David, can I get you to take a look at that area? And I know that there's specific requirements that you have to meet in order to put a bump.
We got to, we just have to have the signs up.
We just put the signage up?
You have to have signs to let you know, hey, there's a speed bump coming.
It has to be so far before a stop sign.
There's no stop signs up there. Not where they're...
Lead some...
Ravish Mountain Road, there's a first stop sign.
Yeah, but I work there with...
That's where they're coming from.
Yeah, but that's where it's coming from. But as far as like where the curves and stuff are, if you get a couple of the speed bumps down there near their houses, there's no stop signs.
One on the corner of the curve, one after the curve, maybe.
One really aggravating, one that drives way there too fast.
They're flying down the curves, and then they're hitting the mailboxes. And then they're coming the other way.
Just to make sure that we're on the same page, Kelsey, go ahead and get with maintenance on tomorrow morning and have temporarys installed.
Before you go into the, you know, little coast. They fly down there by that curve. I'm scared. That's somebody that has a tree. Because they actually go really...
Make sure they stop where you can run water.
They don't slow down.
They hurt the gutter down through there, didn't they?
I think so. That's why I thought there wasn't as much of an issue, because I think there's a detriment.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, right now, we're going to have Kelsey get the maintenance installed temporaries. I want to make sure, David, Nathan, you agree? You and Kristi are on the same page? Okay. We'll go ahead and install temporary, and then we'll get pricing on the permanent ones, and then...
Which I think is great, and I appreciate that. But so they're also heading into Nelson? They're flying that way as well, so you really almost need them...
They need to go all across the road.
Yes, it's like at least, at least two sets, but it would be...
But some need to be down by where our subdivision begins, as well as the hill.
Yeah.
Maybe three sets, if what you need, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
How far apart are y'all from? You don't really need one behind that curve, I don't think.
Yeah, that would be...
Maybe a little.
And I'd like to say, I heard him mention radar. I'm the last house to the quarry of 1649 Old Nelson Road. If any officer was to sit in my yard and shoot radar...
You have to tell them. You can't, like, because we had the same thing with Higgins, because Evan, that owns the mill next door, told me numerous times, "Do you just tell them, do that?" I can't tell somebody that you mean on private property. That's between you guys and the Sheriff's Department. So what we're trying to do is...
Mine? James Phillips.
James Phillips.
At 1649 Old Nelson Road, the last house. I live next to that lot by the quarry. And what are you going to do with that lot?
Which lot are you talking about exactly? Are you on the east side or the west side?
It'd be the south side, I guess. Like, when you go down 372 towards Canton, toward Jordan Road, and the last house on the right, if you go in down...
Heading that way, so you're heading southwest.
Heading towards...
Yeah.
You're at the end of the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah. Right where Solton's, yes.
So you're talking about the land that was already annexed and...
Yeah, next door, there's nothing there. There's woods or...
Yeah, the woods that are, that property there, some of it belongs to the Stair Company, some of it belongs to, it's a guy, I think his name's David Ratcliffe, and they run under Ratman Holdings, I believe. He owns the majority of the city's light industrial property. I believe the quarry leases, because the drive to the quarry, there's two large parcels on either side of the drive that is leased by the quarry. Thomas, from the quarry to me, I think they may be purchasing some of that. The land that was just annexed and there's plans for that for, they do pre-cast stormwater catch basins, but that'll be on the corner of Old Nelson and Jordan Road, so that's much further down.
Yeah.
But I don't know exactly. The city's even contacted him, trying to buy a couple acres, and there's no response.
I hope it stays where it is.
Yeah.
It's all zoned as light industrial, though.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll keep it short. I'm Anne Comsey, K-O-M-P-S-I. I'm at 1665. And I don't know if all of you know this. I kind of coordinated, I call it all the time as well, but there was an accident just last week, and I know, Kelsey, when I came in last Monday, you hadn't heard that yet, and so this is kind of to the sheriff as well. You assume, you know, we're panicking, we hear it, we see it, your heart's racing, like, did they hit something? Was it a deer, a dog, a person? And then you realize the guy that got rear-ended, you know, is he injured? Airbag went off. Well, you go to the paramedics, showed up. She called 911. It was right in front of our house. It was light outside, 7 o'clock in the evening. Guy speeding so darn fast delivering pizzas and just slammed into a guy. And they both had different stories. It's not a he say, she say thing, but it happened. And I don't know if you're all aware of that. I just wanted to share that. And we were, you know, it was scary. She hears it. She's my mom, just moved here from California, so I'm my mom. But she walked, and it's got quite work. She needs to be walking. She's a really good walker. She walked every day in Fresno. And she won't walk because we're scared. A, she's not going to jump out of the way fast enough, but if they're behind her and they're not looking, even at the mailbox, I watch her like she's my child. I shouldn't have to, and I'm already, "Just get away from the mailbox." And she left to go get the mail. Like, it just doesn't seem. And we just moved here a year and a half ago, and we came every Sunday. We lived from California as well, and we live in Alpharetta. We had no idea, and I'm certainly not complaining, but I don't want anyone to think, "Well, you know what you were thinking when you bought a two-lane road." We didn't. We only came on Sundays when we were off to come visit our house, so we never saw the traffic. Does that make sense? And just one more thing, because I'm home, I work, I see the front all day. You know the development, if you're heading to the curves, that one new development that goes down? You know what I'm talking about? Help me here.
Which way are you going?
If you're heading towards Jasper, right?
Yeah.
So past Deb's house, when you make the left into that compound, the development to the left after Deb's house, there's one more house.
That's our subdivision.
No, past my house, there's Deb's house, then a corner, and you turn into that.
Yeah, that's our subdivision.
Yeah, there's two entrances to your subdivision.
Well, I'm on the main road, sorry. Well, there's a guy that he, every morning, you can hear him start his truck, and as soon as he hits a stop sign, he makes a right and punches it. So I mean, it starts right there, too, y'all.
Yeah, there's a bus stop there as well.
Yeah, and so, you know, a speed bump's great and all that, but having someone there to say, "What you're doing is wrong, and we'll, she and I, we do this," and they'll punch it harder, like they're mad at us. And you're like, "You guys, it's just not..." So that's why we kind of want the patrol at least initially to where they know, "We're here now, be nice." Thank you for letting me share.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you for sharing. Lieutenant Desis, I'll just say this again. I've had a couple of calls, and we've had issues and accidents and things on five or in here, and people have called, and I didn't know about it. Kelsey, I told you, it's our point of contact. If, when something happens, major like that, if you could just have your guy shoot her a text and let her know. That way, we're not blindsided.
Can I kind of explain something? There's two separate units. There's like his unit, and then there's a patrol unit, because even like a lot of the stuff that would happen with Downey, Downey wouldn't even know for a little while. So there's like, and I don't know if you're, I'm assuming your schedule's probably the same as Downey's, but...
Yes, well, you know, you want to address it now? Would you like me to address it now?
Yes, please, go ahead.
All right.
So... And I'll, for those of you who don't know, this is Lieutenant Desis, and he's...
I'm Lieutenant Desis. I've been assigned to the Ball Brown precinct, and the Ball Brown precinct is still fairly new precinct. It's not fully staffed yet, so we have a limited amount of people. And the goal really has been to staff the precinct fully, but as every law enforcement agency across the country really is having this difficulty of staffing. It doesn't matter how much we pay, we can't get people to staff coming to work. So little by little, we are getting them allocated to us. So for example, this week, we're going to work some evening shifts, which is a new thing for this precinct. This past week, I did have them come in early for the schools, even though they're not primarily the Sheriff's Office responsibility up here, but we still had them come here and help out with the Ball Brown Police Department for traffic control and things of that nature. It also makes parents feel more comfortable to see more of us present. So whose address? Where are we allowed to park?
1665. I'm on the, yeah, the last street to the last house to the quarry. 1649, you just back in the grass.
I like that, those official permissions to...
Like, I can't tell you that. 1665, you can park in the...
After the meeting, I can give you my card, and you can have a direct email. I will tell you that I've given that, and I have to be careful what I ask for, because I've been giving that out, and in the past two weeks, I've gotten all traffic related, some suspicious persons complaints, which is prompting why we want to come out at night up here and do a little, you still have coverage at night. It's just covered by two other precincts, which makes it a trek for them to come up here. So it's what I suspect, that they have their patrol responsibilities in their area, and if they get a call out here, they'll come out here. Well, I'd like to have our guys actually patrolling here at night, so...
You do patrol inside the Laurel Lake community, right?
Yes, yes. We patrol all throughout, but the problem is, is that when we're closed, we're the only precinct that closes. And once we close, this area becomes a responsibility of two other precincts that help coverage, would be coverage.
Is there a traffic unit, too, that...
There is a traffic unit, but we are also losing the traffic unit from being housed up here, because they're getting their own facility. And their own facility is going to be basically across the street from headquarters. So I suspect that out of habit, they'll still be using this facility, punching in and out of here, coming in and out of here. Plus, they've developed, this is kind of the meeting spot for the north end of the county, but all their offices are going to be vacated. They're going to be located next to headquarters. K-9 as well. K-9 uses this facility. They're also leaving to go to their own facilities being built. So this is truly going to be just a ball ground precinct, and then they're going to move officers in here that house those offices. I'm losing at least one that's going, that's being deployed for a year. So even though I'm promised bodies, I'm also losing people. So it's always like that. It's always a balance. So night patrols, manpower, future attendance to these meetings, I'd like to start making some of those new officers actually attend here, so you guys can have some face time with them and get to know them, and have them understand the unique responsibilities up here. So, you know, expect to see different faces up here. Me or the sergeant will probably be here most times, but we want them to actually address and speak with you so that, you know, they start building that relationship here. I was going to address the speeding. Some of the emails, actually all the emails have to do with, for the most part, speeding. I'm even getting videos, so I'll look at that now. Videos are great. They really are great because...
Silver Ford or Jeep, not been on road. Silver Ford or Jeep, alarms going off.
So the videos are difficult to argue with. So I honestly, I'll tell you, some of the complaints I've gotten, I thought perhaps might have been a little exaggerated. They were conservative. The video was much worse than what was just described to me. So we really like the videos. You'll be able to email me those videos, and I'll pass them along or address them myself. But we're getting really good quality emails with some really good language.
Welcome to Nelson.
Does anyone have any questions, any other things I can address on?
I think that sounds better to us.
So we're going to start to see you guys out there soon.
Yes, actually, tomorrow will be the first evening shift, this Tuesday and Thursday. And what that allows for these guys to do is that covers every shift that the Sheriff's Office currently has. So when they come in tomorrow, they'll deal with a little bit of the day shift and the night shift on this end, and then when they come in Thursday, it'll be a different day shift, a different night shift. So it'll also give the deputies working in those adjacent precincts an opportunity to, oh, okay, there's some people here, this is patrolling. So cops are like, they're like ants, where there's one, that attracts others to come. So that's really kind of, I'm hoping that you have a few guys up here, then a few others will drive up to meet with them, and it'll create more coverage.
Good, thank you.
Do you guys feel better now?
Yes.
We appreciate you laying us comments.
Yeah, hearing us and acting, and we really appreciate that.
All right, anybody else?
Well, I'm listening all around on Nelson Road, and it might sound trivial, but two months ago, my cat was killed on that road. So you're talking about deer and dogs, and cats are just as important to us for the speeding, but we have a man who lives on our subdivision at the bottom, and he has this pink truck, and he goes about 1,000 feet, and then he revs the engine like crazy, blowing the engine just about, up to the hill. When he turns left, he goes crazy on that road by you guys. And we hear him all the way to the stop sign. So I know he's speeding pretty bad.
We want to know about specifically, those are things we're really interested. I just recently watched a video in preparation of the traffic unit was having for trial, and it was exactly that. It was someone that's speeding the neighborhood, a Mustang, going from stop sign to stop sign, and ends up creating a fatality with a lawn service person. Lost control and crashed to the back of the lawn truck, pinning one of the workers there. Driver is, it'd be, perhaps everyone in here thinking a young man with a new Mustang, it's a 63-year-old man that was hot rodding his Mustang. So you'd think that would be worked out by now, it was just a, so we really want to address those, and those should be easy to address quickly because you all know who they are. You know, that someone else was saying something about a pickup truck running here at the stop sign, revving it up, making a right-hand turn.
Yeah, it's a white truck with four bike doors. I know where he lives.
We address many, many, many of those. We have another one in another neighborhood. It was a Toyota Tacoma pickup truck, and he needed numerous tickets before he got to head. And that was another gentleman that says, "I'm retired. I'm going to drive any way I want." Okay, well, here's your receipt for driving any way you want. We'll continue. Eventually, they changed your driver.
You know, I thought something, there, on weekends, there's a gentleman that's got a little baby, and he rides him on the four-wheeler.
Yes.
Right in the middle of the hall.
No helmets.
No, having nothing. He's a little baby.
So we definitely want to address that.
That's mostly how weekends...
Yeah, and we are going to actually hop over and try to get some weekends in, but I'm spread then. I need at least, you know, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but I need another five deputies before I can have a continuous weekend tonight. So what I propose to do is to start changing. The guys up here have had a solid Monday through Friday schedule. That's changing. They are probably going to change days off so they can work some weekends, but you don't get something for nothing. At this point, if I put them on nights, they can't be here the day. If I put them on the weekend, there's going to be some days in the week that you're not going to have coverage. So understanding that, I'm moving them around, and I'm lying, cheating, and stealing to get more bodies up here. So the effort's being made.
It's better than what we have had, so we appreciate it.
Sure, and we're coming out of more difficult times from before. So it may be easier now than it was just a little while ago, so, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you. All righty, go ahead, and we'll move on to approval of our minutes, file number seven. Can I get our minutes for July the 31st, 2023?
Can I make a move?
James, can I get a second?
Second.
Good time. I'll say Nathan. All the favor? Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next up is our department reports, and you're up again.
So I think I addressed that with you. I don't have any crime report, say, but we have started to address the initial speeding complaints. I'm putting numbers out there. We've also, and that's where we got the department transportation, things like that, that nature, because we were wondering, you know, how are we going to enforce some of these, specifically the trucks, because some, many of them have a built-in excuse to be there. Specifically, if they're making a delivery of some sort anyway, that kind of voids any of the no-through trucks. So we have to be a little more creative than just the presence of them coming through there. We're going to actually have to observe them, watch them, trail them through, see if they're making a delivery, and also bring in some other entities possibly to do some inspections. They don't want any part of that, so if they, I'm presuming that once they see attention being made there, it's going to be either tempered down or avoided completely.
I ought to do that. We do have a few issues going on where we believe there's dealing going on in our subdivision in certain areas, and we've had a dog already get a hold of meth twice.
Yeah, all of those things, like I said, I want you to have an easy way to contact me, and I can throw those to the appropriate people. And I will tell you, those types of complaints often feel like they fall on deaf ears because there's something being looked at or investigated that we don't reveal to you. So just understand that many times, what you're talking about is a known thing.
Thank God.
But you'll have, the main method to get ahold of me probably through emailing me, because there's a record that you made the complaint or the inquiry, and I will respond back to you, and you'll know that that's being addressed.
Right, because we have, you know, the traffic has increased going down into a cul-de-sac where there really shouldn't be that kind of traffic that we get during the day. We get, I want to say tons, and that's part of the speeding. These guys speeding down there, going to...
There's a, the C man, you can also call them and report some of that stuff, too. I know we've done that when we had some other issues here, which I don't like, so I'd get off the...
There's a neighborhood in the last precinct, that was at Hickory Flat, that had this traffic all going to the park. We started doing proactive patrols there, and it turned out that it wasn't just one person. It was multiple people using that park to make exchanges, so...
Right.
Yeah, we've had it down here, this one before. Yeah, we've had it down here at this one before. But C man, you can call him, you can do it anonymously or you can tell him who you are. But it's a multi-agency narcotic squad or whatever it is. But they're.
Yeah, it just makes you nervous. You know, like right now, my granddaughter's visiting for four days and it makes me nervous. I mean, knowing that we're getting all this extra traffic, the speeding going down there. I don't want her up near the road. I mean, I won't take my dog for a walk. You know, because of, you know, another dog getting a hold of it twice, you know, just from going for walks. It's just a literally a regular walk with its owners. And it makes me really nervous to know that that's going on in the subdivision and that's where a lot of our traffic and our issues are coming from.
Well, I'll wait after and I can give you my information so I can go.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, next up is going to be our mayor's report. So I did get a, a response back from Barry today. Barry's been on vacation. He says he's sorry he's been on vacation. He had some last minute updates to the survey for elevation and pixel size that needed to be adjusted for the county. And he said he'll be back on Thursday and he will address it at that time. He said also the master storm plan, he wants to discuss with the county and then go ahead and get, see if he can get the, see if they can build off of the work that's already been done if possible and use the G I, the G I S that's to access that data. So he, he'll be back on Thursday. He'll have a better update for us on, a better update for me on Monday. So that's progressing. Both of those are our storm drain project in phase three, nano master plan. Bears in Laurel Lake again, so just.
Yeah, they're on the Rigs Mountain too.
On the Rigs Mountain. So they're out roaming, so just be mindful of that.
Back to you.
Yeah, especially somebody saw them coming down to our trail, so. Next up, that's all I have for right now.
What for Mary?
Next up is going to be our finance report. Ms. Miranda, if you want to go ahead and take that out.
Yes, okay. So we're just getting this fiscal year started. Last month just finished up and we've just received the bank statements today for July. So really not much to report, but we'll go with bank balances. General fund currently $869,457. SLOSS four, $155,174. SLOSS two, $170,844. SLOSS five, $809,863. The cash reserve fund is $167,906. SLOSS 2020, $875,240. And then the cares grant funds, $220,376. Like I said, only one at the end, nothing really to report in your pocket is your bank statements.
Let's give a shout out to one of our own here who has a job promotion. As you took the finance director position for the county. Way to go, Miranda.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you on our team. We are definitely proud of you and happy to have you on our team. Next up is.
In that word, now we got some dealings. We got to deal with Mary.
Yeah.
It's got to be extra nice. I'm very raised and you better be extra nice to her.
We'll move on to unfinished business. Our HI zoning. This is the, this is our second here, second reading. Any questions on that? I think we answered it earlier, but anybody have any questions on that? Can I get a vote to approve our HI zoning?
I make the motion.
James? Hold a second. I want to say, um, David, he beat you to it by a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. All righty, the next up is the compensation for mayor and council. This is second reading. Did you say we didn't, we did it over and over? Kelsey says we didn't.
Yeah, you can vote, it's just not, you don't have to have.
Don't have to read it. Can I get a motion to approve the compensation for mayor and council?
Can I make a motion to approve?
James, second. Chrissy? Everybody's waiting on somebody else with it. Okay, so all in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Next up is going to be our colo. We just want to follow suit with the county and also our sister cities and just the council for employee, employee retention. I don't know, and I'll, I'll say this for everybody, including the ones that are here, but we've got some awesome employees in Elson. They've been here, they've been steady and they, they have the best interest of the city at heart from our sanitation people that I get calls weekly on talking about, you know, how awesome they are and they pick up on Christmas and Thanksgiving if it falls on that day. To our maintenance guys who go and do the, you know, the extra above and beyond. And then Kelsey, who's our forward-facing here in, in the city hall and Miranda, who's behind the scenes. We, we just really have a good team. So our council approved a 5% colo and a raise for all, for all of our employees across the board. And we need to vote on that. We want, like I said, we just want to stay in line with our counties and make sure that people know what we're doing as well. So, and I know that most of you are as proud of our, our employees here as, as we are and we want to keep them. So if I could get a motion to approve the 5% colo raise. Chrissy?
I'll say it.
James? All in favor? Thank you. All righty, next up is going to be our animal control ordinance. And Kelsey, you can take it away.
This is the, this has to do with James' next neighbor. There was just a court case in Cherokee County. I don't know if Jeff said anything to you about this or not, but everything ended up working out. They held the court case in Cherokee County, but he was a resident and is a resident of Pickens County. So they actually had to have a hearing to see if they, it was a jurisdictional issue, I guess. We had to be able to prove that we had court pirated 1983, which thank God we did not get rid of all of our records and still have a court document from the seventies. Sent pictures down, were able to prove whatever, some prior precedent or something. So they were able to hold the court case. He was found guilty on all the charges. But when, it was McIlroy went back through, apparently we have adopted Pickens Animal Control ordinances and Cherokee County's Animal Control ordinances. So to make it easier for them, we need to have just one animal control ordinance if they are going to be enforcing animal control and holding court in Cherokee County to deal with this stuff. So this has been one case. We've had this agreement with Cherokee County since 2019.
I thought that agreement was for our entire city when we.
It is. It is. But the issue came to where his attorney was fighting it because he was a resident of Pickens. And it ended up being fine. It wasn't a big deal. But this, this goes. There's ongoing issues with other things. But it was, I, I have a one-inch file in the office just of all of the calls that were made on animal control. And I think it was 12 charges that were just in 2021 is all he went to court on. So I think he had to pay a fine. He was able to serve, he didn't go to jail, it was like a probation type thing or something as long as he didn't get in trouble again. I think he had to surrender his animals, set it up. But I have the email in there from McIlroy explaining it, but basically, I said, the email that was there, that it just basically came down to, we need to have just the Cherokee County Animal Control ordinances because the ones in Pickens can vary slightly. But if they're going to have to deal with stuff like this. And this, what it came down to basically, he had a bunch of pit bulls, might or might not a thing, being fed regularly and would get out and you have hungry animals that are going to eat. And that could be your neighbor's pet or your dog's food. Sometimes it was neighbor's pets. So anyway, they just have to be able to enforce the rules to take them court.
So we basically need to vote to have Cherokee County, our IGA with our Cherokee County for our animal control.
No, we already have.
Are we voting solely with every one?
All we need to do is just have Cherokee County Animal Control ordinances for the city in Elson, not Cherokee and Pickens Animal Control ordinances. Because we've adopted that. And it's like they, they can collect at times.
Okay. Can I get a motion to strike the Pickens County Animal Ordinance and go solely with Cherokee?
Can I make a motion?
James? Can I get a second? Chrissy? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
I think so. Is that good?
Is that good?
Was that my name?
Yes. So solely with Cherokee for animal control. They can be animal control ordinances and adopting with Cherokee. In lieu of our, of old E speed bumps for Old Nelson Road and all of the folks that are here today and, and the actions that we have, can I go ahead and get a, a motion to put the temporary speed bumps up on Old Nelson Road? We can take a look at where tomorrow and go ahead and try to get those in by the, my call would be by the end of the week and then get pricing for the permanent ones. I get a motion to vote on the speed bumps. Temp for now, permanent.
I'm making a motion.
James, can I get a second? Chrissy, and that is the resets. Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Thanks. All right, new business. Property tax write-offs. Kelsey, I know this is your favorite topic.
I'm not, but. I'm going to check this later. Hey, so we are down to like just these draglers or the property tax stuff because accountings have taken over the billing. The second page in there is, they're stapled together, but that's literally all that's left in the property tax arrears. At one point, this was like 28 something thousand dollars. It's down to, I think, $2,903 right now, well, $2,903.84. We have an agreement with, like, Tax Services, I think is the name of the company. I called them, there is an issue with our software company again. Sorry. They have to have a spreadsheet printout in a specific format that lays out every single year with all of the penalties and interest format in a specific way, which our software will not do. So basically it's going to have to be done by hand on a spreadsheet, which every 30 days you have interest again. So it's constantly changing. Most of these, you send letters out, most people are responsive, most of them pay. I sent letters out again last month. I had a handful of them come back in and pay them. The ones on here that are legitimate are the ones that are in orange that we can actually collect. Because there's also a seven-year rule. So anything that's past seven years, we cannot collect. Which was the other thing when I was talking to the guy from Delinked Tax Services, because we have to go and identify anything that's over seven years from basically on Cherokee County started billing, anything that was left from that point weren't going to be. But the ones, like the first four that are there on that sheet, the oh-four and oh-three ones, most of those, like I can track, one of them was foreclosure. The first one was a sale that had went to a veteran. I have the, the sheet from clothing where this sold, or I guess it was paid, it just never came to us. But again, it's had, all four of those are past a seven-year rule. So they can't, no matter when, can't collect them anyway unless they just want to pick them. The other ones are either vote, I guess, personal taxes, inventory taxes or something else, which some of those, I don't think we're technically even supposed to collect. They kind of just got in our stuff. And then some of them were business taxes for companies that we've never even had business licenses for, specifically the last two. Some of them, the 1373 Pickens Street, he was not in town for the year. That's on there. So again, it's just, they're piddly little things. I sent all these to Jeff and asked him.
So these are, these that are highlighted in this yellow green color, they're over seven years old?
They're, the first four are over seven years. The ones that start with the, that end with a P are like personal tax ones. They're broken down on the membership too, the first one. Like I didn't know more detail about it. Like which year it is, what it was, whether it was something that was legitimate or just something that popped up on, because our digest would come in from the county. So stuff, sometimes it would get popped in there that might not necessarily have been us. And there were a couple of them that when we contacted the company or the homeowner to send a check, but before the check got here, interest payment wasn't applied. So then like these piddly, like three-dollar amounts, two-dollar amounts were instead crossing in the mail.
So this will get us back on, this will get us on track?
This will write off a total of $1,201.48, I believe.
So it cleans up our, it cleans up the stuff we can't handle or that we can't do anymore.
There's like, I think, seven left that we can legitimately collect. And one of them is my guy that hasn't paid taxes since 2013. But it's an older guy. So that one, and I've sent letters, he's signed off and got them. But it might be one that I can paint it in instead of having to go through and somebody that's going to, I don't know, last house taken at the same time.
People not paying $70.
He didn't pay taxes with the county for a while and then he started paying taxes. So.
So we have to find a situation, see what we can do.
So who's like, you contact these people? Like, or is there a company that doesn't?
We have a service with a company that will do it, that they can't do it until we can send them a list or a spreadsheet in this format that they want. And our system will not do it. I've contacted the company and they're like, oh, we can do them like this, but it doesn't itemize by year. It just has a bunch of numbers and like columns, but it doesn't tell you what year it's what. So it'd have to be done by hand, but it changes every 30 days. So by the time you get it done, it's going to change them. Surprise.
Well, the ones that we really need them to work on are these seven, so we could send those every 30 days.
Well, they're, those seven are all Pickens. So, and I think honestly, I could probably just talk to Daniel and see if he could, and they're all like 2020 or 2021, very recent. Some of them have actually been paying on them. They've called in and they complained on a couple of them. Couple other ones called and they're like, I didn't know this, I'll get a check out later. I've actually, there was actually that double that amount. That happened when we were paid. And there was a couple other ones that were doing more. But if we can get into the county tax, we'll let them collect it.
How long? Twelve hundred's a whole lot less than two, than 20,000. So appreciate that hard work.
Drastically come down, but it's still, the judge didn't really back it up for the meeting, but absolutely, yeah, she can make the law.
So, um, let me see that.
It's like the week collecting both taxes.
I don't.
Well, we used to a long time ago. The county did. Now they don't.
Yeah, and I'll have some people call and say that they sold the boat and then you have other ones that just don't respond. Some of them have moved.
Those are all due.
You're chasing down stuff. Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Oh, I think it says 29, 10, it was true. It's like a few dollars or whatever.
Yeah, two dollars, five dollars. So it's like, if you want to leave those on, we can leave them on and pursue it. But it also gets to the point at, at what price point.
Is it worth it for $4?
Well, it's like, I, I mean, I've sent so many letters and since everybody turned received a letter, $7. That's what I'm saying. It's like there has to be a point.
Say the number and if it's not over that, strike it off with.
I mean, and she's narrowed it down from 20,000 to this. I mean, that's, that, that's a lot.
Yeah, and I know some of those people have moved. So some of them aren't even here anymore.
$54, $53, 379, 288. So, so the ask here, council, is that we can write off the, the $1,201.48 in, in these property taxes for 2023 that is either old or they're a minuscule amount for things that we don't collect, we don't collect taxes on anymore. Can I get a motion to approve the 1201.48?
I make a motion.
Nathan? Make it a second? Uh, David, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Give me one second, guys. Next up is going to be maintenance of the equipment replacement mower.
I was really lazy the other day, we were a little bit past by a run with number mowers. I have a 2015, a 2018, and a, let's see, a 2021 maybe? I don't know, the 2015 one is past that point, and that even 2018 is kind of right at that point. Anyway, we're, Kelsey turning these like every five years, so I did ask Ricky to go ahead and go down and get a price on it. And they did do the price with the runt plot tires, which is what we've been purchasing as soon as we get them anyway. But it on, just because they run over so much glass and we spend so much time replacing tires otherwise. So this is the government price with the replacement tire, I mean, there weren't flat tires. They've not come out to look at the trade-in value yet, they were just come last weekend.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, the trade-in.
Yeah, it'll be the 2015, because that's the, like the spare number that's sitting there.
So right now, we currently have one that we, we purchased, what, three years ago? Is it three?
It's three.
Was it three?
Around three years, I can't remember.
I know we have fifteen and eighteen. I want to say it's twenty-one. I don't remember, so.
Twenty-one, that's about right.
I'm thinking straight out of twenty-one.
So we have to put a total of three more, so.
Yeah, and one's, one we'll keep as a spare, so the three more is being serviced, and another one there.
You can trade in my oldest one.
Yes.
And then the, the replacements, eighteen seven twenty-five without the trade-in. Do you guys want to wait and get the trade-in value and then vote on the total?
Yes, we need to get another price from Mason or somebody.
We can try to, some of them, like the, when the last time I went up to, to try to get one from Blue Ridge, I had, they did give me one just because their city was half in Cherokee, but I guess they get kind of territorial. And then I actually drove around to try to get prices and-
I'm glad I followed them out with us on the backside on them all.
I don't know, well, they, they finally sent it to me, it's for the wrong machine.
We bought it from Mason's and wound up having to send it back to the factory and get it redenied. Then, you know, it jumped back to that.
Because most, most of our stuff has come from Nelson, they're right, because of the-
We have to buy everything here.
Repair and stuff.
Yeah, and prices are always less.
I bet maybe we need to get another quote from somebody just-
Yeah, just for giggles, we can do that, yeah.
You remember how much we paid for eleven two years ago?
Oh, they sell them at a pretty cheap place.
I've done it too. I bought it sixteen thousand after the trade-in.
The run flats are running.
I want to say like eight hundred bucks a piece, so we're looking at like six hundred, eighteen hundred just in tires. There was a guy that was buying from it, they were a little bit less. I've been wondering for like nine months.
I've been wondering what our end to get them. Really?
So, so will you add this back? Let's get the, let's get one of the price, and let's get the trade-in value, and then we'll put it back on the, we'll put it back on to vote in September.
I mean, if they're cheaper, I ain't got a problem with going ahead and buying it.
I mean, every time we get prices, they're always, and it's not always, it's not drastically less, but it's always at least a hundred bucks less.
Close to the same.
Okay, so do we want to go ahead and vote to, for this price point at the eighteen seven twenty, eighteen seven twenty-five minus our trade-in value, if, if it's, which it probably will be less, the Mason tractor? You want to go ahead and vote on that, Ben?
Yeah, I'm buying it. We, we may want to send that up on the auction, they're bringing up hundreds of auctions, if they don't offer us another.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the eighteen seven twenty-five minus the trade-in value?
You may not want to do the trade, or we just approve the eighteen?
So whatever.
And then we'll see what they offer us for the other.
Can I get a motion to approve the eighteen seven twenty-five for the, the new zero-turn mower from Nelson Tractor?
I'd make a motion.
James? This is David. All in favor? So, and I'm going to get, I'm going to go with Mason and then trade-in and then cross, auction. See which one we want to do. And then the next up is going to be curving gutter for the Kitty Playground Mark.
They both sent pricing for this, and he did have a couple of recommendations, and I asked him just to stick on here, so you can see it. The price for the curving gutter around the new Kitty Park, which would help with the runoff that's running down the, the south side of the playground. The total is thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty, but that includes the paving for the parking as well. I did text him to verify that. He said if you do not want him to do the paving, then you can take off sixty-five hundred, which came out. Then the total for just the curving gutter itself will be six thousand seven hundred and fifty. So you can leave a lip, and then if the county, you want to have the county do it, then they can do it while they're out here. But I think we'd probably pay more than that to have the county do it. He also had a couple other recommendations, because the, the space where, where the cars park, where the fence is, there's like a, a strip of grass before the playground starts, it's maybe three feet wide. It's too narrow for the guys to get the mowers through. So he said if you take the fence and push the fence back, you can actually create a little bit, like a deeper parking area. And he, it's something that they could do if some city wanted done.
Would that, would that mean that the, the fence would be right up next to the rise?
Be next to the step up with the mulchies.
Yeah, and then you lose that, I think, the drop-off thing.
I mean, that's just me, if, if you went through it or somebody-
That's what the curving gutters are. The curving gutter acts as a barrier to stop cars, and they're going to put bumpers. You're going to have a curving gutter and a sidewalk.
And.
And a fence. And then the playground, and then he's all, they're also going to put in like stop blocks with the cars before the curving gutter.
I'd rather say let's get the engineers to look at it and make sure we can get everything like it needs to be as far as the wheelchair ramps and everything.
Right. Because if we do that, and then it's still not ADA compliant, then we have to redo it.
Yeah.
Again.
Either Mike or Kid, or, which he'll have to get the engineer to look at, so Barry or-
We'll get Barry to come do it, he'll be back on Thursday.
Well, he'd also said, said that you could fill in the side of it and raise it up, so it's not, you don't have that drop-off to where you get it to where you only have a few inches along that side and then sod it. So you don't have that big one-foot drop-off over there. So it was just kind of ideas that he was throwing around, so that, that's what these other two additional prices are.
Okay, I, I like, I like the ideas, and I know we definitely need something. I'll, I'll get with Barry and get him to come out and take a look at this here and see if, and see what he recommends too. That way we can make sure that we cover all the bases, and we're not just steady going back out there for one thing or another.
We could put them temporary things up there to keep some of them running into the fence for now, until we get something done.
And he, and he can do the paving, the mowers, not as much of a timeframe, you know, that the county try to work it over back-to-back and stuff.
Yeah, that curve needs to be put in for that paving anyway, so.
Well, but if he does the paving though, then it's not, because he said that if he busted it out, then he can pave it and do like concrete paving there instead of having to butt up to it with asphalt. And that's what the, that's what the thirteen thousand dollar price is. If you want him just to do curving gutter and leave a lip for them to asphalt, and then it's six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only six thousand dollars to pay, but I think we-
That's what I was saying, I think it's probably less expensive to have him do the paving part, if he's only charging, it was a difference of sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, I like that. Let's, um, if you guys are good with it, let me get with Barry, have him look, let's have him come look at it, have him look it over and see if he makes any other recommendations here. And I can have, I can even have him meet with, with, with Barry, I'm with him too, just to see, and then we can, we can vote on it in September.
He'll probably, he probably won't be able to make it down here until the end of next week, because he's not coming back till the end of this week. So, but I'll call him.
If it's over ten, we're going to have to bid, so.
It depends on if you do it in phases, so if, if you, there's ways around that, I mean.
That needs to be bumped up though, because it costs us so much money to run out with that stuff.
It does. We, we can have legally, and you can answer this, but we can have somebody that we have, that we appoint, like, that's a, that does small jobs for us in the city. The council just has to vote for those small, small jobs, even though you would have to vote on those small jobs, but it would be up to, say, twenty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars. That would eliminate the need to have to have a, for a small job like this, have to have run ads in the paper that holds you up several weeks, and then you have to have, you know. If you have an emergency job or something like that, it's just good to have something like that. You know, I like Brett because he's done a good job for us in the past. His work's been quality work, I feel like, so I like having somebody on our, on speed dial in case we have an emergency. It's good to have somebody like that. I know other cities do it, you know, so there's a reason for it.
This, this would be Sonny William Heathcock, if they're two, probably, if you could get him to write it.
Yeah, I don't want him calling him, he does a good job on this stuff too. So action.
Because he does, he would be the one that does the paving for Brett, I guess, unless he does it with the city man.
He was going to use, you want to have concrete?
I agree.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get a bid from there, I'll get Barry to come look at what's proposed, and then I'll come back to you guys in September.
Does Heathcock do concrete work, or does asphalt?
He does like rat horse and very good.
Okay.
Probably maybe the same people, I don't know.
All right.
He actually does the paving though.
Yeah.
I know he does like paint and stuff, because then he, like a small job comes up again, a little bit pricey.
I think he's done all those sidewalks and stuff over here about a year ago, dude.
Frank Martin.
I apologize, I didn't have an update on that, on our sidewalks, I'll get with that, I'll get with Barry on that and get something sent in from text message. Anything else on this curving gutter for Kitty Park? I'm going to get with Barry, have him look at it, review what Brett sent over, get a price from Heathcock. Is that good?
Just make sure it's eighty-eight and nine, and then whatever they just-
Eighty-eight, okay. All right, I'll do that. Anything else, someone else?
I keep talking to the county, you mentioned sidewalks.
Yeah, I did, I, I said I apologize for not having an update, but I will, I will have one, I'll send a message out tomorrow. I'll go to your call, I mean, to, to call, I'm Bill Wood. Can I get a motion to adjourn? David, Nathan, all in favor? Guys, thank you guys for coming.